Good morning, everyone. This is the Public Committee of the Whole regarding bills' numbers. 240-963, 240-964, 240-966, 240-967, 240-968, 240-969, 240-970, 240-971, 240-972, and 240-973. I want to thank all of you for being here today, but before calling the roll, I would like to announce that we have translation services available for anyone present at today's hearing. If needed, please go to the table to my left. Services are being offered Mandarin and Cantonese. Mr. Christmas, will you please take the roll?
Councilman Squiller. Council Lady Gaudier. Councilman Jones. Councilman Jones. Councilman Young. Councilman Driscoll. Council Lady Lozada. Council Lady Bass. Councilman Phillips. Councilman O'Neill. Council Lady Gilmore Richardson. Councilman Thomas. Councilman Harity. Council Lady Ahmad. Council Lady Landau. Council Lady Brooks. Councilman Overick. Council President Johnson.
Present. A quorum of this committee is present, and these hearings are now called to order. Mr. Christmas, will you please read the title of the bills?
Bill number 240-963, amending the existing gallery at Market East Tax Increment Financing District being the area generally bounded by Filbert Street on the north, Eighth Street on the east, Eleventh Street on the west, and Market Street on the south, to remove certain portions of such property generally bounded by Filbert Street on the north, Tenth Street on the east, Eleventh Street on the west, and Market Street on the south from such district, and approving the amended project plan of the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development for the redevelopment of the gallery at Market East Tax Increment Financing District, and making certain findings and declarations all in accordance with the Tax Increment Financing Act being the Act of July 11, 1990, Public Law 465 Number 113 as amended, and authorizing the Director of Finance and other officers of the city to execute documents and do all things necessary to carry out the intent of this ordinance. And bill number 240-964, authorizing the City of Philadelphia to organize an authority to be known as the Arena Services District Authority pursuant to the terms of the Pennsylvania Municipality Authorities Act, all under certain terms and conditions. And bill number 940-966, to grant necessary authorizations for the city to help facilitate development, construction, and operation of a new arena for the Philadelphia 76ers professional basketball team and for other uses, including authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property and such other city officials as may be appropriate on behalf of the city to enter into the following agreements and take the following actions. Acquire fee simple title to all the portions of 1001 to 1025 Filbert Street, 1001 to 1019 Market Street, 1025 Market Street. Together, the Market-Filbert Street properties acquire fee simple title to other parcels of land, aerial areas, and subsurface areas in the vicinity of the Market and Filbert Street properties, including without limitation those areas reverting to the city or other parties in connection with the striking of certain aerial portions of Tenth Street between Market Street and Filbert Street, the additional properties and certain other nearby parcels and areas. Enter into a ground lease agreement with the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development under which the city would lease to pay all or a portion of the Market and Filbert Street properties and the additional properties, if any, and other parcels and subsurface areas the city now owns in the vicinity of these properties, all of which collectively would constitute the arena site. Join in or consent to a sublease and development agreement, the sublease, between Paid and either CBL Arena LLC, ArenaCo, an entity affiliated with the Philadelphia 76ers Limited Partnership or another entity affiliated with the 76ers under which ArenaCo or other 76ers-related entity would sublease the arena site and cause an arena to be constructed on it, including a multipurpose sports and entertainment facility and ancillary accessory and related amenities, improvements and infrastructure, the arena, and agree to other related conditions. Upon the expiration or termination of the sublease or other circumstances set forth in the sublease, convey fee simple title to the arena site to Paid for disposition to ArenaCo, grant, accept, amend, relocate, and extinguish easements, agreements, conditions, covenants, and restrictions encumbering or benefiting the arena site and any city-owned property adjacent to the arena site for the benefit of the arena site to facilitate construction and operation of the arena. Enter into a direct operating covenants agreement among the 76ers, Paid and the city under which the 76ers agree to play substantially all of their regular season and playoff home games in the arena, and take all actions necessary and appropriate to accomplish the intent and purpose of this ordinance all under certain terms and conditions. And bill number 240-967, authorizing and approving the execution and delivery of a service agreement between the City of Philadelphia and the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development relating to the provision by the Philadelphia Authority for industrial development of certain project-related services to promote, among other things, the growth and expansion of business, commerce, and tourism within the City of Philadelphia in connection with the development of a multipurpose sports and entertainment facility, including an arena to accommodate National Basketball Association games and family entertainment, community retail, and other uses, authorizing and approving the obligation of the City of Philadelphia to pay in full when due service fee and other amounts payable under the service agreement and covenanting to make necessary appropriations for such purposes, and authorizing city officials to take necessary or appropriate actions to accomplish the intent and purpose of the ordinance, all under certain terms and conditions. And bill number 240-968, authorizing a revision of lines and grades on a portion of City Plan Number 307 by striking from the city plan and vacating Filbert Street from Tenth Street to Eleventh Street under certain terms and conditions. And bill number 240-699, authorizing a revision of lines and grades on a portion of City Plan Number 307 by striking from the city plan and vacating certain aerial portions of Tenth Street between Market Street and Filbert Street under certain terms and conditions. And bill number 240-970, authorizing CBL Arena LLC and its successors and interests to construct, own, and maintain various right-of-way encroachments in the vicinity of 1001 to 19 Market Street, 1025 Market Street, and 1001 to 25 Filbert Street, Philadelphia PA 19107, under certain terms and conditions. And bill 240-971, amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled zoning and planning by amending certain definitions relating to signs, creating an arena area within the Center City Overlay District, and making related changes, including a master plan requirement and changes to accessory sign controls, all in connection with zoning rules for a proposed arena in Center City, and approving a master plan for the arena area all under certain terms and conditions. And bill number 240-972, amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled zoning and planning by revising certain provisions of Section 14906 entitled Market Street East Sign Regulations under certain terms and conditions. And bill number 240-973, approving the amendment of a neighborhood improvement district in the area generally bounded by and including Eleventh Street to the west, Filbert Street to the north, Eighth Street to the east, and Market Street to the south, with the exception of certain condominium units at 801 Market Street Condominium not included in the district, known as the Gallery Neighborhood Improvement District to remove certain portions of such property generally bounded by Filbert Street on the north, Tenth Street on the east, Eleventh Street on the west, and Market Street on the south from such district in accordance with the provisions of the Community and Economic Improvement Act, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Christmas. Before we get started, I just want to tell everyone we welcome you here today to speak on and propose legislation regarding the proposed arena. We just want everyone, regardless if you are for or against this project, to be respectful of all testimony and public comments from all of the individuals who are here today. We also have working with us to our left the Office of Civil Affairs, our Sheriff's Office, as well as Philadelphia Police Department that would be working with us throughout this process, but we also expect for this to continue being a very spirited and lively discussion for a critical project that we are proposing in front of us today. I want to also acknowledge the presence of Members Councilmember Bass, Majority Whip Thomas, Councilmember Squiller, the author of the legislation, and Councilmember Dr. Nina Ahmad. Mr. Christmas, will you please call the first panel?
Sabrina Maynard, Budget Director, City of Philadelphia.
Hello?
Good morning, Sabrina.
Good morning.
First and foremost, thank you. I want to congratulate you on your promotion.
Thanks so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And to state your name and title for your new title for the record, please begin your testimony.
Good morning. My name is Sabrina Maynard. I'm the city's budget director. I'm joined by Sam Rhodes from PIDC. Good morning, Council President Johnson and members of the committee. We are here this morning to testify in support of bill number 240-963, which amends the existing gallery at Market East Tax Increment Financing, or TIFF, district. The TIFF district was created by bill number 150-380, which was approved in June of 2015 to support renovations of the former gallery, now known as the Fashion District. Those renovations have been completed, and the TIFF district is operating as a retail mall with mixed office uses as contemplated. This amendment would remove the 1,000 block of Market Street from the existing TIFF district and leave the remaining portion of the district from Eighth to Tenth Streets between Market and Filbert intact and continuing to operate as a retail mall with mixed office uses. The amendment to the TIFF is requested to facilitate development of a new arena to support home games for the Philadelphia 76ers, and this will only take effect if the arena project moves forward. Removing the 1,000 block of Market Street from the TIFF would mean that tax revenues from the block would no longer flow to the developer of the Fashion District to pay debt service on the bonds they issued to fund the Fashion District project. The parcel that would be removed from the TIFF would be subject to negotiated pilot and UNO payments. With respect to procedural requirements of the Commonwealth's TIFF statute, this hearing is taking place with 30 days of public notice and with both the City Council and School District having approved resolutions agreeing to participate in the amendment should it be approved by this ordinance of City Council. In closing, this requested amendment is a procedural companion to the several ordinances required to facilitate the proposed new arena for the Sixers and will only be effective if the arena project moves forward. We respectfully request that you favorably vote ordinance number 240-963 out of committee today, and we are happy to take your questions.
Thank you very much, the Chair. Also recognize the presence of Minority Leader Kendra Brooks. In your testimony, you stated that removing the 1,000 block of Market Street from the TIFF would result in tax revenues from this block no longer being directed to the developer of the Fashion District to service the debt on the bonds issued for the project. Could you clarify how much revenue would be diverted from the developer as a result of moving this parcel?
Yes. My name is Sam Rhodes with PIDC, and the estimate through 2035, through the remaining term of the district, is $3.4 million. The developer can expect to receive about $40.4 million under what we call the build scenario if the arena does go forward, and they would have received about $43.8 million by our projections if it does not move forward.
Once the proposed arena parcel is removed from the TIFF, the parcel would then generate revenue for the city. Could you outline a timeline for when revenues from this parcel begin to flow to the city? And specifically, what a pilot and UNO agreements take effect? When will they take effect?
The pilot will take effect, is estimated to take effect in 2033. Under the state statute, it takes effect upon the land transferring into the public ownership, which is estimated to be in 2028 when the Sixers have completed the demolition. If they move forward, at that time, it would move into the public ownership. The pilot would take effect under the terms of the pilot under the state statute for the first five years to allow for that demolition and construction period. There would be no payments under the pilot, and they would commence in 2033.
Is that the same for the UNO agreements as well?
The UNO payment would start immediately upon the occupancy of the arena.
Could you also detail the other types of revenue the city is expected to receive during the demolition, construction, operational phases of the arena?
Correct. Yeah, so those through 2035, again, through the remaining term of the TIFF district, the city can expect to receive a net of $69.3 million.
No, my question was other types of revenue.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. And that number includes all of the other types of revenue.
All the other types of revenue.
Liquor by the drink tax, which would go to the School District. In addition to the UNO, the pilot, there's the amusement tax on tickets and all of the sales taxes related to the sale of merchandise and so on. We also included the estimate of parking taxes related to folks who would attend.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Curtis Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning. Is it true that the primary economic development organizations in the City of Philadelphia are PIDC?
Could you speak into the microphone, please, for... It's the night.
Thank you, Mr. President. Is it true, is it safe to say, that the two primary economic development organizations in the City of Philadelphia are PIDC and the Commerce Department?
Yes, sir.
If that being true, what is the plan for Market Street East outside of the arena but dealing with the adjacent properties that have... And what is the vacancy rate between Macy's and that site?
The vacancy rate at the gallery is about...
Between, on the other side, the southern side of the street, from maybe Tenth Street to Macy's.
Sure. Where we've calculated the vacancy rates are on the south side of the Market Street, which I think is consistent with your question, from Ninth Street through the 1,100 block. And that is roughly, I want to say 50%, I have to confirm with those numbers, but there's a high level of vacancy if you walk those blocks. And if you saw the presentation that our Director of Planning and Development, Jesse Lawrence, provided, there's a significant amount of boarded-up facilities there. And then the other point I wanted to make with the gallery is that it's currently got 20% vacancy, so it's also experiencing a high level of vacancy in its current state.
So it's safe to say that that particular portion, commercial portion of our city, is pretty bad off? Is that...
Yes, sir.
It's not an economic term, but I'm gonna go with it.
I understand the technical term. Yes, it is not thriving currently.
So whether we approve this arena or not, what would be the, and I go with the "or not" as well, because everybody that is against this arena has yet to tell me what we do if we don't develop that site, and how does that assist spawn development on the south side of Market? Is there a plan?
Yes. So a couple of things. One is that I believe that this arena provides the opportunity to develop Market Street, and there's a couple of elements to that. One is that, if you recall, within the CBA agreement, there's an allocation to provide for a master plan, which is called for under our Community Impact Statement, is for the city to put together a master planning exercise both around Chinatown and Market East. In addition, I would highlight that unlike prior investments, public investments into Market East, including specifically the gallery, in this case, the developers of the arena likewise have those southern, south-side properties under agreement, so we have a unique opportunity to develop that collectively.
Can I have a point of information, Mr. Rhodes? I just want to ask, and I know the master plan is a part of CBA, but I know there's also several different roundtables that the mayor is convening. So even if it wasn't arena, there would still be a master plan developed for East Market Street, I would think. There will at least come out of some of these roundtables that talked about the revitalization of Center City as well as, I would think, the vision of the planning department will be thinking proactively regarding this particular part of Center City. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. And I think with the arena, it creates an anchor around which then you have some energy to plan off of and to redevelop that area.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Curtis Jones for his time.
Thank you for that, Mr. President. Whatever the decision of this body, I would encourage us to bring to that roundtable discussion SEPTA and a security plan for that same area. And why do I say that? The other day, several brave parents turned in their children from that attack. I was thinking of Councilwoman Bass about what do you do when the shooter lives with you? And we have to have a cohesive plan that includes SEPTA, that makes it safe, clean, reliable, but also that we take control of our footprint downtown. We have been in discussions with several schools, which will not be named, because they recently have been beset with these gatherings outside with young people fighting each other, attacking each other with these meetups. So whoever you're working with have to include those components, whether or not it's a Sixers arena or whether it is a new rendition of retail. All of those components have to be in that plan. Thank you, Mr. President.
We agree with you completely, and while the arena is still many years off, we're already in discussions with both the Sixers and SEPTA and the Police Department around ensuring the cleanliness and safety of the area.
Just one real quick question. Macy's, what are we planning for Macy's?
The, I do not have, speaking as PIDC, I do not at this point have anything on my desk in terms of requests for funding or anything like that with Macy's. So we would have to talk with the owner at this point. They have not reached out to us for any assistance.
Thank you, Mr. President.
But we would be happy to talk with them.
Thank you, Councilmember Jones. The Chair recognizes Councilman Jamie Gaudier.
Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Councilman Jamie Gaudier.
Thank you, Council President. Good morning, and congratulations, Ms. Maynard, on your appointment. Back in 2015, the gallery became the Fashion District, and the city saw it as an opportunity to quote-unquote "save" Market East with more jobs, shopping, and reactivating the corridor. The Fashion District back then was what we are being promised that the arena will do today. Although this particular piece of legislation can be viewed as a procedural matter required by the Commonwealth, I do think that we can learn a lot from looking at how the city has approached economic development at Market East in the past, and perhaps consider how we can do better. Many of us were not in office when the current TIFF was created. So let's start with why this TIFF was originally put in place. During the initial presentation, some of the promises made by the developer were, one, that they would pay $1.6 million to the School District annually; second, that they would generate $94 million in tax revenues via use and occupancy and liquor by the drink taxes over 20 years; third, that this would result in a projected $11.4 million annual increase for the district in 2036; and last, quote-unquote, "thousands of jobs." How would you compare the Fashion District's performance against the original projections? For example, are there reports showing the value of diverted taxes for each year through 2024? Do we have a comparison of jobs projected versus jobs created?
Thank you, Councilwoman. When the TIFF was created in 2015, there are a number of primary goals there. One is to keep in mind that at that point it was under public ownership, largely the Redevelopment Authority. And so one of, there's a number of goals that were, I would have said, did not meet the public eye, and there are a number of goals that did meet the public eye. So one was that the city at that point had virtually unlimited liability or exposure for maintaining the core and shell of that facility. So one of the things that we did with that TIFF is that we were able to cap and limit the city's exposure for the gallery. So that was one issue. Secondly, we were able to do that while maintaining the public access to the SEPTA and other public transit facilities, so we were able to maintain that. And then, thirdly, we were able to put, we were able to achieve the, what did meet the public eye, is we were able to achieve or facilitate the reinvestment in that gallery. So keeping in mind that typical malls get reinvested in in terms of tiles, lighting, and so on and so forth every three to five years. That mall had not been reinvested in in over 25 years due to the complicated public-private investment. So there's a number of different motives in creating the TIFF, only one of which was the reinvestment. With respect to their performance and your specific questions on the tax revenue projections, the city and the School District have continued to obtain the base-level values of tax revenues that were projected in 2015. The growth in those tax revenues was, in fact, under what the projections were, and of course, there's a number of factors in that. One, of course, is COVID. Another, of course, is the, I'll call tectonic shift in retail and store retail across the country, of which the gallery was certainly part of that trend. So the growth projections are certainly under what they were originally.
Okay. What criteria do we use to determine if a TIFF is successful from the point of view of the city? And are there public reporting requirements that TIFF districts must comply with?
Sure. The success, whether or not it's a success depends on the specific goals, the public policy goals and objectives of the TIFF. And primarily, keep in mind that TIFFs are put in place for pieces of property that are either blighted or underperforming. So generally speaking, it's receiving the investment of the construction itself, which, we can check that box. We did, in fact, receive that over $300 million investment and the construction jobs that come with it. Secondly, we get a rejuvenated facility, and we certainly were able to obtain that. And then, as I mentioned before, we had other multiple sort of priorities there in terms of the public ownership and capping the city's exposure, all of which we were able to obtain.
Quick, one more quick question, I promise.
Sure.
Okay. Lastly, I would say, given, you know, you noted some of the seismic shifts around, you know, how people shop now, COVID. There will always be seismic shifts. Given that, should we, you know, is it up to us to accept the projections and the numbers that developers put forward in considering these tax incentives? Or should we, is there any change that we should make to our process? And that's the end of my questions.
Okay, thank you very much. The answer to that is that the owner of the Fashion District is Mace Ridge. Mace Ridge is one of the largest operators of malls in the country, and so they're very focused, as is the whole retail world, on performance. When we do these projections, they go through a series of alcoholic filters in order to represent what we think is our best guess. And I'll be clear. These are estimates. These, we spell out in the original project plan in 2015, as we do here, all of our assumptions for the public to see. They represent input from the owner themselves, so they are in the business of projecting forward what they think sales and other revenues will be. So we look at those numbers. We look at them vis-à-vis industry standards. be. So we look at those numbers. We look at them vis-à-vis industry standards, and also vis-à-vis information that the City of Philadelphia and the Revenue Department and so on have. So we're able to put them through a series of filters, I'll call them, to, before we arrive at the numbers that we put in front of you. And in all cases, we do try to be very conservative.
Thank you, Colleen. Point of information from Councilmember Squillert and Chair recognizes Councilmember Bass.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. One other point of information. If you remember when we did the TIF, one of the main things in 2015 was to alleviate the city of the maintenance obligations that we have, which was millions and millions of dollars to try to keep that gallery operating, because it was under PRA, Redevelopment Authority hands. So it really, not only the cost in taxes that they would be generating, but the cost to the city, that we had to constantly try to fix that. And we weren't a great landlord per se, in that it would take us forever to fix things and do things. And so that was another reason why, to really alleviate the city of the burden and having the private company then own it and then, then be responsible for the repairs. And sometimes that isn't seen as part of the, why we did the TIF.
Correct. Definitely under the tip of the iceberg. But we shifted the responsibility for all of the infrastructure
From us.
To the private sector. Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilmember Bass.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Councilwoman Squillert, for the clarification and its important information to put on the table. I just had a really, a couple of quick, very quick questions. And I wanted to just say that from Councilman Jones's line of questioning about the amount of vacancy, and I know he used to run a, you know, a little, little organization for PCDC, the other PCDC that used to do commercial development, you know, throughout the entire city. So I know he knows a little something about this. But can you talk about, and I know, Sam, you've been here for a minute, can you talk about the price tag? How much have we invested in Market East over the years? You could give it, you know, like in the last few years or the last 10 years. But can you give us some sense of how much have, has the City of Philadelphia invested in Market East thus far?
You ask all the tough questions. That is, the short answer would be, I'll have to get back to you on that.
Okay.
But, but to illustrate it, the city, if you think about the publicly owned investments there along Market East, you have a number of, of course, federally owned properties.
Mm-hmm.
That's on them. With respect to the city, the primary exposure really has been around the gallery, which goes all the way back to the late 70s with the decline and suburbanization of the department stores, all of which had their headquarters and flagship stores there, the collapse of the transit system, the combination of the old Redding and Pennsylvania railroads into SEPTA, putting that underground. So I'm going to say billions and billions. If you think all the way back to what Philadelphia has done to completely makeover over a period of 50 years, what its Center City looks like. And regardless of various thoughts or opinions on the gallery, I personally view it as something that's very successful in the sense that it is a retail center that sits on top of the, of the transportation network of Philadelphia, and brings people in from all neighborhoods in to do the shopping there. So very substantial investment over time.
Well, you know, I can tell you that, and it's funny, because I heard Mayor Parker speaking about this yesterday, and I have a similar story when she talked about, you know, like what a big deal it was, you know, back in the late 70s and early 80s to come downtown and to go to the gallery. It was a big deal. It was a big deal in our family as well. And as someone who went to high school in Center City, you know, we were in and out of the gallery all of the time, and it was packed, and it was successful. It was very successful. And, you know, listen, shopping habits change, people change, you know, where they want to shop, how they want to shop. And so I think that the gallery actually, you know, succumbed to, you know, trends and changes that way. But I just really wanted to illustrate that we've made quite an investment in Market East. And so, you know, like, we're at a pivotal moment, you know. I don't think that the answer is to stop making investments in Market East. I think that we have to look at what we've already invested and build upon that investment so that we can, you know, make that part of the city, that part of downtown Philadelphia, as successful as it possibly could be. And I also want to follow up on something else that Councilman Jones mentioned earlier, which was that I haven't heard anything in terms of, you know, an alternative plan. Like, what's, what's, what's the opposite plan? If it's not the arena, if it's not 76th Place, then what is it? You know, help us, help us help you. But I'm not, I'm not hearing that. And so I just wanted to ask those questions about, you know, the investment that we've made thus far. But I'll come back around for more questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks, followed by Councilmember Jones.
Thank you so much. So I have a question about the proposed Arena Services District and the CBA. The Arena Services District is financed by $14 million in the CBA. If this passes today, does it lock us out of the $50 million discussion around the CBA?
That question might be better put to the next panel. We're specifically focused on the Tax Increment Financing District.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Squillert for a point of information.
Thank you. This bill is the TIF.
Okay.
So this is not, doesn't deal with the term sheet, doesn't deal with the CBA. All it does is remove the portion of that one block of the Fashion District from the TIF. That's all this does. It just removes it from the TIF. That's it. It has, if, if the casino, casino, if the arena legislation doesn't pass, this goes away. This, all this does is remove them from the TIF because it takes them out of the benefits they're receiving on that block. So is that clear?
Yep.
Councilmember Brooks, would you like to start the time mover?
No, just, I'll pass. Just.
Okay. If you want to come back for a second round.
I'll come back for a second.
Okay. Thank you, Colleen. Thank you, Councilmember Squillert. Chair recognizes Councilmember Jones, followed by Councilmember Landau.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question is a part two to what I asked before, but it's more dealing with SEPTA transportation plans for that particular strip, if I could. I still see you. Thank you so much.
Yes. Mike Carroll, Deputy Manager Director for the Office of Transportation and Infrastructure Systems.
So whether or not this body takes the step to approve or disapprove this project, but let's suppose that we go forward with it, I am unclear about the plans for a safe SEPTA ride to the facility. Every planning study that suggests that we have to really rely on mass transit for this to be successful, we cannot park our way, drive our way through a successful development of this facility. Tell me how we address safety. SEPTA is in, and, you know, they already talked about somewhere in a, close to a $50 million differential, I think it might have been $20 million differential between what they would need just to keep up with ridership to go to the facility. But tell me how we're planning to work with the City of Philadelphia, the Police Department, to make that experience for someone who comes from the city, but particularly people that were attracting to spend money here. How they do that safely in conjunction with games? How do we do that?
Okay. So there, there's going to be work on that from today, you know, through the 30 years of that arena being in operation. So what the main principles are, I think, are that SEPTA wants their system to be safe for everybody all the time. That's the goal. And there's a lot of work that's going into that now. And, you know, I encourage people who feel like they have not been safe or have feelings about SEPTA to give SEPTA a chance. Come back to SEPTA, try SEPTA. I think they'll see there's an improvement. The ridership numbers for the past year are showing that people are coming back to SEPTA. And I just want to, you know, set the, set the table with that, that that work is going on now. With respect to the arena, with respect to games, there's a couple of things that I would point to. The first thing, I think, is that in the work that SEPTA did, which they presented to, to City Council, their focus for people coming from the suburbs is how they get on regional rail and how they get off at Jefferson Station, and how that capacity is there in the regional rail system for them to come there. I think that's where there's some questions that need to be answered. There's work that needs to be done. The fact is, though, that among the modes that SEPTA operates, regional rail has the fewest problems and probably the best perception in terms of safety, cleanliness, the issues that relate to quality of life and people's comfort using the system. So that's not to say that that answers itself, but it gives us a better position to start from to make the improvements that I think that you're speaking to and people would want to see so that people who are visiting the city have a good experience. A lot of what needs to take place is how the arena space, Jefferson Station, is managed. And I can tell you that there's a lot of focus, not just from SEPTA, in staffing up with people who will act as ambassadors, help people get their direction, you know, manage the crowds on the platforms. But also the Sixers will have personnel that are in the area doing that. Philadelphia Police will have a presence there. So we'll talk about this in the next bill conversation. But the, the main focus has to be for all of these resources to be coordinated and working together with that, that intention. And so the remaining pieces, I think, have to do with people who are on the subways, the Broad Street Line, Market Frankfurt Line, who we might expect are coming from a little bit closer within the city, but also folks who don't have quick access to regional rail, but may think, okay, it makes sense for me to drive to one of these subway or L stations, you know, park in that vicinity and catch a ride there. And, you know, frankly, when I go to see an Eagles game, that's how I travel. I'll go to the Broad Street Line, get on, get on the train, and work my way down to Energy Station and walk from there. And what you find is that there is sort of safety in numbers in terms of that, you know, crowd of people, they got their jerseys on, they all know where they're going. The misbehavior you see when there's not a lot of people on the train tends not to be an issue when you're crowded with fans and everybody's got the home team spirit and they're going to catch an event. So that does not mean there isn't work to do. And I think that goes back to the thing I was saying in the first place. You know, SEPTA, working with Philadelphia Police, working with partners, have to secure those station areas. And so we need to get a sense for what those patterns of travel look like on those origin stations as people are on the outskirts of the system, working their way in. And we have to make sure that there's effective police presence there, that there's effective management of the situation there. Some of those stations are going to be more likely for folks to want to park and then ride the system in.
That's what I really was looking for. I'm looking for, I know when we did the South Philadelphia stadiums, there was some thought given to how people would take mass transit from as far away as Fern Rock down to Patterson. I want that same emphasis given for people who might want to get on that 69th Street, want to get on that 30th Street, want to get on that 40th Street, to take that ride down there. And it, it's going to require both security and vigilance above ground and below, above ground and below. And I think if we are truly trying to make sure that if, if this project is approved, that people feel comfortable before and after a game, going to our restaurants, shopping in our, our commercial district, that they need to feel that when I'm done eating, when I'm done shopping, there's a reliability of safe transportation so I can get back to my neighborhood or my car. So that plan, irrespective of who pays for it, has to be thought out. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Council, excuse me, I'm sorry. Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilmember Landau, followed by Councilmember Lazada.
Thank you. So my questions are both for Spreeda and Sam. You rattled off a lot of, of dollar amounts and stats in the beginning, and I thought they were in your written testimony, but they're not. So could you go over them again to know, what I'm looking for is you were talking about the tax benefits. I think you were talking about the original TIF and what the tax deal was there, and also what the tax benefits will be. So I'd love to hear again the numbers you both said. And then I have a follow-up question.
Certainly. Thanks very much, and apologize for rattling those off. They've been swimming around in my head
I bet.
For too long. So I appreciate that. The question that I was responding to initially was around what would the, what would the city expect to receive in tax revenues if the arena moves forward? And then what would be the impact to the developer of the mall in terms of their TIF funds?
Yes.
So let me, let me just walk through this piece by piece. So what we estimated and projected is what I'll call the build scenario and the no build scenario. In other words, what happens if the arena does move forward? And what could the City of Philadelphia expect to receive in tax revenues if it does not move forward? And then we subtracted A from B, and that's the, the net benefit. So in the build scenario, you're removing one block from the TIF district, one block from the Fashion District. The Fashion District is now concentrating in two blocks as opposed to three, about 900,000 feet instead of about 1,300,000. In addition, then, the block that's being freed up, the arena is being built. So under that build scenario, through 2035, and we chose that number because that's the, when the current TIF district ends. So through 2035, if the project moves forward, the city can expect
[beep]
to get about $73.3 million in all of the various revenue, tax revenues for that. If we do not move forward, the city can get, expect to receive about $4.1 million if it remains in its current status. So the net positive to the city through 2035 is $69.3 million.
Great.
Does that help?
That's helpful. And we have 2035 as the end. Why also would the second, the remaining parcels of the Fashion District remain under the TIF if it's going to have new ownership, or at least a combination of new ownership?
It will, it will, from a legal perspective, it won't have new ownership. So the entity that owns the Fashion District will continue to own the Fashion District. It's my understanding that they may take in a new partner in terms of partnering with the Sixers, but it's effectively the same entity. And make, and make no mistake, Mace Ridge is a very substantive owner of malls and retail space across the country. So they will continue to own and operate that.
Okay. We might disagree on whether taking in a new partner means new ownership, but I hear you. Because they are getting a tax benefit then on the, the two-thirds remainder through 2035. That's the point.
They are, the, the tax benefit, the TIF that was put in place in 2015 will continue for those two blocks. That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen. If you need to tee up for a second round, feel free to do so. But colleagues, just keep in mind, this is only the first panel of about four that we have scheduled for this morning. Chair recognizes Councilmember Lazada, followed by Councilmember Young.
I just have one really quick question. We've made a lot of requests from the School District of Philadelphia. We've asked for improvement plans, investments. What impact will the amendment have on the School District's budget or financial planning, given their participation in the TIF, in the TIF adjustment?
Thank you for that, Councilwoman. And that question was asked last week when we presented in front of the school board as well. They, of course, were focused on what their revenues are. So the numbers that I just went through with respect to the city, with respect to the School District, through 2035, the School District can expect to have, see a little bit of positive revenue. They, in the no build scenario, they could expect to receive about $43 million. Under the build scenario, they can expect to receive a little over $48 million. So it's about a net $6 million benefit through 2035. The benefit to both the city and the School District really comes over the 30-year term of the, of the Sixers play. The, the challenge with looking, measuring it just through 2035, of course, is that you're experiencing the period of time when the existing facility's been under construction, demolished and under construction. So you have a dip in revenues during that time. So over the, over the 30-year play term of the Sixers and the construction, in that scenario, the, the School District can expect to receive about $153 million.
$153- $153. Thank you.
Thank you, colleague. Chair recognizes Councilmember Young, followed by Councilmember Ahmad.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a, a quick question. And understanding that this is just a, a procedural vote, you know, that's, that's required if something were to happen. Will, will we have to remove the TIF, let's say, for example, if a hospital wanted to develop on this site, right, or, or such entities like that? Would the TIF have to be removed because of that particular type of development as well?
Yes. If there's any significant redevelopment or alteration from the original plan, then we would anticipate removing that site from the district. Yes.
Thank you. Just wanted to get some clarity on that. Thank you.
Thank you, colleague. Chair recognizes Councilmember Ahmad, and after Councilmember Ahmad, that will be it for the first round of questions unless someone has a burning question that didn't get an opportunity. Councilmember Ahmad.
Good morning. Thank you for your testimony. I had a quick question about the costs incurred by the city to facilitate this process, this arena project, including this reduction of the TIF. Also to understand, what is the appropriations being, coming to paid from our, from us to you? And basically, all the, you know, maybe they're incidental, but the expenses, the legal, the departmental, all of it together, how much are we, how much is it costing the city to get this prepared for the arena to proceed?
To, to date, nothing. And that, the, the conversation that, that I think has been a little bit in the public eye is this, this notion of the Sixers funding the, well, let me take a step back. So the work that we've done to get to this point involves the, the various studies that you've seen have been undertaken. And so we ran requests for proposals. We selected consultants for the community impact.
And who paid for all that?
Pardon? And the Sixers did. So the Sixers provided funds to PIDC, which was held as a blind fund. So the Sixers had no input with respect to the RFPs, the selection, the work, or the outcome. That was completely managed by PIDC in partnership with the City of Philadelphia. So all of the plans and the structuring and the work that got us to the state was funded out of that pool.
And what will the city be paying paid? There is an appropriation piece, right, once this, what, what will be that payment?
That is projected to be, also to be nothing. So, so if this, if this project is approved and we move forward, the Sixers move forward with constructing the arena and then operating it, you're correct, PAID sits in the middle of that. The city owns the land, they lease it to us, we sublease it to the Sixers. Built into that transaction is rent from the Sixers to PAID to cover our costs of administering that lease over those 30-year period of time. So we would not expect to incur any costs from the city. You're correct, however, there is within one of the ordinances a, what's called the services agreement, which effectively backstops if there are any costs that are, again, there's none projected. But if there do end up being costs under that lease to PAID, then we would look to the city to fund that.
So we would be paying, at the end of it, we would be paying whatever you, cost you incur would be passed on to us?
Correct.
And in, in, in a situation, if there was a clawback provision for what, if they were to leave early, or we were to do something outside of what the agreement is, is there, is there, this is not including the pilots and all of that, what we have lost by putting a pilot in. Is there a dollar figure, or you're saying there's no cost incurred pretty much, just going beyond the record, there's no cost being incurred in order for this TIF to be reduced and for the parcels to be ready for the arena to be built on this new aggregated space? So no, no cost incurred to the city in order for that to happen?
Can you, can you respond to that quickly?
Yeah. Okay. I just wanted to be clear, there's, we're not spending any money to do this.
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, colleague. Quick questions for round two, and then we have to move on to the next panel. Chair recognizes Councilmember Gattier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have one more question for the panel, but I also wanted to chime in quickly on the conversation started by Councilmember Jones and Councilmember Bass in the most respectful way possible. I, too, think that we should be solution-oriented when it comes to Market East or any other corridor in the city that needs economic development. However, I think it's challenging to ask community members what's their alternative when they're coming up with critiques. I think it is, in fact, the job of PIDC and the Planning Commission to offer a vision, a master plan, a vision, and economic development plans for our important corridors. And unfortunately, we're like in this position of only considering the one thing, right? But like, a master planning process might deliver other things that we can, that we can consider. So just wanted to add my thoughts in the most respectful way as possible. Sure.
Chairman.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Bass for a point of information.
Thank you. So while I do respect your opinion, I do disagree strongly, and I'll tell you why. The idea that government, that we in these chairs have all of the answers is a fatal flaw, in my opinion. We need to ask everyone, what do you think? What do you want to see? What is your opinion? The idea that we hold all of the answers is incorrect and dangerous. We need to hear from everyone. And that doesn't mean that because you come and testify and you're opposed, that you have an answer. But to not ask the question, I think, is a dereliction of our duty as members of council. So I just, you know, with all due respect.
We actually are in agreement on that point. I became a city planner because I think it's important to empower community members to build their own vision for their neighborhoods.
Absolutely.
I just think this forum makes that a little difficult. That's why I've asked so many questions about the sequencing of the master planning process. In, in my experience, the plan comes, then the idea for the project comes, and then you move forward. And this kind of seems a little bit a cart before the horse. But I'm going to get to my question, Mr. Chair. It's going to be quick.
So I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. Can we be very, very quick? Because you just used your whole time right there.
Yes, yes.
Well, and I have to let Councilmember Bass offer a response, but then we have to move on, right?
Okay, right.
So, Councilmember Bass, please.
So, and I, and I certainly understand what you're saying, but at the same time, if we are going to, you know, we're constantly accused of not listening to the people. And so to not ask them this very important question, again, it's, it's irresponsible not to at least ask for folks to come and to expound upon what is their vision for that community. And, and really, because the gallery is located in such a, well, the gallery, I'm back at that, but the, but the location of what would be the 76th Place is in such a central location, then, you know, citywide, folks should be able to weigh in and say, this could be a vision for it. That could be a vision for it. These are ideas that people want to bring to the table. And there's nothing wrong with us, us as members saying to them, I want to hear what you have to say. Isn't that what we are always saying that we are all about, is listening to the people? And if we don't listen to the people now, when are we going to start? And so that's, I, I just want to put that out.
Thank you. They've been doing a lot of weighing in, but I'll move to my, I'll move to my question. So, Mr. Rhodes, you acknowledged earlier that the projections we have for the original fashion district TIF fell somewhat short of the actual outcome. So given that, you know, economic conditions are always going to be variable, and it's impossible to predict the future, what kind of safeguards can we build in to make sure, to future tax incentives around projects, including this arena project, to make sure we're not giving away public resources to projects that miss their benchmarks? In other words, what kind of clawbacks might we implement as we move forward with these big projects that oftentimes include big incentives?
Thank you. That's a great question. And the way in which Philadelphia has, has used tax increment financing in specific effectively is self-enforcing. And, and a lot of jurisdictions across the country, counties or cities guarantee the tax revenues. So that to the extent the tax revenues are short, they have to make up the difference, in which case you'd get into your question of, of the notion of a clawback. Philadelphia has never done that. We, as a matter of policy, offer up the tax revenues that are generated, whatever they might be, whether they're what we estimated, whether they're higher or whether they're lower, to the, to the developer to repay the portion of the debt taken out. If the tax revenues are lower, then the developer receives less money. They are effectively the one who guarantee and backstop that debt. So to the extent that the tax revenues are insufficient to cover the debt, they have to guarantee it. So we effectively have, and I'll call it the Philadelphia model, a self-enforcing clawback of the, of the, of the tax increment financing. And I would offer to say that we've been well-served in that respect.
Thank you.
Okay.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Landau.
Thank you, Chair. Two questions. One, I wanted to clarify something. Councilmember Lazada asked about the school district income that would come from this, taxes for the school district. You said if we build it, it would be $43 million a year. I think I have it backwards. No build, $43 million, build, $48 million, right? So $6 million additional dollars per year if we build it, right?
Correct.
And then you said over a 30-year term, it's 100, would be $153 million total realized for the school district?
Correct.
But $6 million by times 30 years is $180 million. Where did you come up with the $153 million number?
$153 million is the, it's in the, it's in the detailed projections. So it's, it's literally going tax by tax. So the taxes that benefit the school district are its portion of the pilot, $2.8 million a year, the, the U and O tax, and the liquor-by-the-drink tax are the three taxes that primarily benefit the school district. Those were projected through the 30-year operations of the, of the arena, and that totals to that $153 million.
Okay. And one last sneaky question to put in. If the TIF is in effect until 2035, is there a renewal clause in the agreement that it would renew? And how, how could we guarantee that it's not renewed or only renewed if needed?
The, the state legislature took care of that for you. So the TIF stat, the Pennsylvania TIF statute does not provide for renewals. It really is intended to be a one-shot deal for up to 20 years in order to encourage reinvestment in ablated or underutilized property. So that, that will not be renewed.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you again for our first panel. Sabrina, congratulations again on behalf of members of city council, and we look forward to continuing to work with you to make, to make, okay, I'm sorry. Chair recognizes Councilmember Young.
Thank you. Just, just one more quick question. So you, you said the, the $43 versus the $48 million over, over the lifespan. Is that $43 in additional, is that, does that include the other taxes that you've, that you've come up with, with this, this final number? Does that include the U and O, liquor-by-the-drink, the current, stuff like that that goes to the school district as well?
Yes, I'm sorry. I, I, I missed the beginning part of your question, but the taxes for the school district and for the city include projections of all of the individual taxes.
Yeah, but just, but just about the school district portion of it, right? Because to my colleague's point, you know, you, she did, was it $48 times the 30 or whatever? It wasn't, it wasn't that number that you said. And so, but you've included in your final number of that, that $6 million plus times the 30, you've included the U and O, liquor-by-the-drink, anticipated U and O, liquor-by-the-drink, et cetera. Does your, does, do we account for the current U and O, liquor-by-the-drink, liquor-by-the-drink for the next 30 years if it currently stands as is? Is that included in your, like, projections as well? So we get an accurate comparison of the two?
Yep. I hear you. Thank you. So the, the, the first set of numbers through 2035 is a net of what the city or school district would have received anyway. So that's $6 million. The notion that the city, the school, I apologize, the school district would receive $43 million if we did nothing, that's the projection through 2035. If we move forward, it could be expected to receive $48 million. So that's $6 million is the net through 2035. Then the $153 million is if you extend that out through the full 30 years.
And that additional, so the $153 million we send out over the 30 years, that what, so you, so we will only be included, that's to say, in additional 30 years, that we just times that $43 by 30, and that's all we would get? We would not get any additional revenue for that particular 30-year period? We would not see an increase in U and O? We would not see an increase in liquor-by-the-drink? We would not see an increase in those other taxes that go to the school district as well?
The, the, the pilot agreement and the U and O payment are, are agreements. So those are scheduled with escalators. All of the other taxes related to the activity, the, the amusement tax coming to the City of Philadelphia related to tickets, the liquor-by-the-drink tax, the beverage tax, all of those are, are based on volumes. All of those assumptions are in here. Those will be, we have in here what we think are reasonable, conservative assumptions. The actuality could be higher, the actuality could be lower, but those are our assumptions.
Yeah, but without, without the, let's just, so you're making those assumptions, but without it, can, are there assumptions being made that the growth will be stagnant in those taxes? Or will it be, can we, can we assume that those other taxes will increase as well over the next 30 years?
Chair recognizes Councilmember Scola for a point of information. And then unfortunately, colleagues, we got to wrap up this panel. I'll let you finish your line.
For the current gallery now, so what he's saying is, those projections, are you projecting those numbers for the current gallery to compare that to the projections of the arena?
Yeah. For, so for the gallery, we, we projected out, we have the current information that got projected out as is. Yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. And as I was saying earlier, Sabrina, congratulations on behalf of the members of city council. We look forward to working with you. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the next panel for today's hearing?
Mr. Mike Carroll, Managing Director for Transportation, Transportation and Infrastructure.
Mr. Carroll, good morning, sir. How are you? Thank you for being here today. Please state your name for the record, and you may proceed with your testimony.
Again, I'm Mike Carroll, the Deputy Managing Director for the Office of Transportation and Infrastructure Systems. Good morning, everyone. Council President, Councilmember Thomas, and members of the committee of the whole, my name is Michael Carroll, and I am the Deputy Managing Director for the Office of Transportation and Infrastructure Systems, which we call OTIS. I'm here to testify on Bill Number 240-
Mr. Carroll, I apologize. You're probably a little taller than the person before you. Can you just start all over, state your name for the record, and begin with your testimony? We apologize.
Okay. Good morning. My name is Michael Carroll. I am the Deputy Managing Director of the Office of Transportation and Infrastructure Systems, also known as OTIS. I'm here to testify on Bill Number 240964 to organize an authority to be known as the Arena Services District, extending from Spring Garden Street to South Street and from Broad Street to Eighth Street, as amended. As Mayor Sherrell L. Parker stated in her decision to support the arena proposal, the corridor along Market Street has been under stress for decades, and this project supports the mayor's vision to turn that around by bringing investment and activity to the street and catalyzing vitality that can bring benefits to the entire city. The Parker administration does acknowledge that many community concerns around the arena project are substantive and legitimate. At the same time, Mayor Parker asserts that the challenges associated with building and operating the 76th Place Arena be put in perspective, and that the administration and the proponents of this product should be given the opportunity to address those concerns in good faith. We recognize this will require a group effort. That means building institutions that are not only guided by community voices, but also include community representation in directing resources and in holding the project accountable. Therefore, as the administration has come to appreciate the range of insightful questions raised by city council over the past few months, we are also grateful for thoughtful ideas that have emerged from our discussions. With that in mind, we strongly support Bill Number 240964 introduced by Councilmember Scola. Based on feedback obtained through the public engagement, we believe this area spans the potentially impacted parts of Market Street Corridor, Chinatown, Washington Square West, and Midtown Village. This bill is an auspicious step towards tackling community concerns and promoting both quality of life and a welcoming business environment in the- and promoting both quality of life and a welcoming business environment in the context of construction and operation of the arena. Formerly establishing an Arena Services District Authority will have a direct benefit in advocating for the interests of neighbors and businesses when routing issues to accountable public agencies, as well as to the developers. In this respect, the Authority fills the need for a single convening and coordinating body that is exclusively focused on the needs of the existing communities. Furthermore, the administration agrees with the bill's authors that the Arena Services District be funded through the Community Benefits Agreement. This will allow the Authority to directly fund services and improvements within the district boundaries. In that fashion, a complete mechanism is created to take the most meaningful feedback we have heard from both supporters and opponents of this project, and then to turn that into focused plans. Moreover, this ensures that such plans are kept up-to-date and translated into sustained action. While one can anticipate services will focus on cleaning and greening, as well as promoting safety and security, the administration sees real wisdom in the approach taking and crafting this bill, specifically that the services undertaken by the Authority should be determined by the members of the communities and then memorialized in a formal Authority Services Plan. This process will be transparent, and it will involve engagement culminating in a public hearing process, and it will require approval by City Council. The need to center all this work on the community is why the composition of the board is so important. The administration supports an amendment to this bill to establish a seven-member board that will include no less than four members who live or work within the district boundaries and have no other conflicting affiliations. The Authority necessarily will play an important role in managing the impacts of parking and traffic as well. The administration strongly supports the designation of a traffic oversight committee under the Authority that will include representatives of the registered community organizations, businesses, and City Council to ensure a tight feedback loop for planning and advocacy. The committee will also convene a range of professionals representing SEPTA, PATCO, and administration departments responsible for transportation, public safety, and emergency services, which will support planning and allow for direct management of traffic and parking concerns. I'm especially grateful, as characterized in the bill, for the traffic oversight committee having a clear role to satisfy the requirements of the traffic event management plan that will be required as a condition of the permits necessary for the arena project to advance. By consolidating this work within the Arena Services Authority, duplication of roles and confusion among accountable parties will be avoided. The work of the traffic oversight committee should commence as soon as the Authority is incorporated by Council and the members can be appointed. This is because the bill requires the committee to develop plans to manage the impacts of demolition and construction. The committee will then adopt traffic management plans to coordinate transportation activities in the course of the arena's operation. When the arena is up and running, we anticipate that the Oversight Committee will coordinate the scheduling of events to minimize conflicts and assist in managing the parking demand, as well as the supply of new parking. To summarize, we commend Councilmember Squilla and his staff for authoring this bill, which reflects thoughtful and thorough consideration of the challenges involved in constructively challenging public feedback into effective ideas. As we continue to engage with City Council and with the public around the proposed arena, we feel this bill embodies the best approach to addressing the specific concerns ranged around safety and security, construction and transportation impacts. We support this bill and encourage council members, community members, and other stakeholders to get involved in making this approach a success. Thank you, and this concludes my testimony.
Thank you for the testimony. Chair recognizes Councilmember Squilla, followed by Councilmember Gaudier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Carroll, for that testimony. As we were looking through the initial introduction of the legislation and the CBA, we really thought it was important to work with the mayor's office and Council President to pull together an arena district, which this Authority becomes. In the amendment also, we've changed, added the boundaries down from, we heard Wash West, who testified earlier, from Spring Garden, was stopping at Pine, and now will go down to South Street, from Broad to Eighth. Those boundaries are basically as requested by people from within the community. The biggest thing, and as you mentioned, is the creation of the Transit Oversight Committee that the Authority will be able to review with PENDOT approval. PENDOT will have to approve any plans that are set forth. And so it's important to make sure that, as there are three phases of the plan that you mentioned during demo, during construction, and then during events if the arena is built. The key, I think, is that it's going to be reviewed by the Controller's Office. It's required to be reviewed by the Controller's Office, and to see if we meet those goals. And then the Authority would then go back to those committees to make sure we have proper changes. But what we would also like to do, which we, in the term sheet, whereas if we do not reach our goals, we've heard this over and over again from, what happens if you don't reach forty percent transit, public transit? What happens if, you know, we have gridlock there? You know, we would like to have a provision where, right now, the Sixers have agreed to pay first year of transit passes. This has not been agreed on yet, but I mean, as we still work on our term sheet, as we still work on the CBA and looking to add additional things, I think it's important to say, hey, listen, there's a responsibility for all of us. If we don't, if for some reason we do not meet the forty percent goal for that first year, and the Controller comes back and tells us that, then, you know, we have to, somebody has to be accountable, and then the Sixers would have to pay, or the arena folks have to pay another year of transit tickets, and every year after, to make sure, until you reach that goal. There has to be some type of provision in here where we are held accountable as a city and as the developer to make sure that happens. Again, that is not part of the term sheet at this point. We want to make that part of the term sheet. There has to be a provision in there where there's an accountability. Planning is always great, but we know that actual activity sometimes takes a different track than a plan. And so I appreciate your involvement in working the administration and the mayor's office for supporting this arena district. I think it's really important to give the autonomy to the people who live in the community, and that's why majority of community members was also important, because they should have a say on how that money is being spent and what resources they think they need to spend that on as the impact on their surrounding community. And it's not us, the city, telling them, but they will have a plan in place. And what the municipal authority has created from this, obviously, if the arena legislation doesn't pass, the municipal authority will not move forward. So at that, in that case. But just in case it passes, this Authority will allow the community to have more of a say and the resources to do it. So, thank you.
Thank you, colleague. Chair recognizes Councilmember Gaudier, followed by Councilmember Lazada.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have some questions about traffic management. I'm sorry if I missed some of this in your testimony. The Civic Design Review Committee asked Seventy-Sixth DevCo to submit an updated traffic plan. Does the administration expect that the Traffic Oversight Committee will provide that plan, or is the Traffic Oversight Committee providing revisions to the updated Seventy-Sixth DevCo plans? And also, what authority does, what kind of power does the authority have to enforce whatever traffic plan is proposed?
Okay, so I'll try and break that up. So the developers are responsible for obtaining the permits that they need by submitting a traffic impact study, and they're working through finalizing that based on comments from PENDOT, from City, and from SEPTA. So the public sector sides come together, and we have compiled questions and comments for revisions that we want. That process is still underway. PENDOT basically manages that process, and so that will have to be complete before anything can proceed. Now, the legislation that we're looking at now contemplates what I'll call a traffic management plan. That traffic management plan can check the box in terms of adopting the Sixers' traffic event management plan, which is going to be a requirement of the permits that they need from PENDOT. So they can become one and the same thing. The Sixers have to draft it up. It can be basically incorporated into the work of this Authority, and then owned by this Authority from that point moving forward. So that event management plan is going to describe the things that need to take place, you know, when there's a game, when there's a concert, how staff are deployed, how we manage the situation, what's closed, what's open, and basically provide the framework for the details that happen each night. The enforcement of that then falls on staff that are brought on board, so we've talked about that being something that the Sixers are going to play a role in, but also the Philadelphia Police Department. And so the Philadelphia Police Department will coordinate, just as they do in the stadium district, that sort of day of the preparations before then, and then the shutdown after events. So they have complete authority to control the street, to manage traffic, you know, to give tickets, to have people towed, to do what they need to, to make sure that things operate smoothly.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, colleague. Chair recognizes Councilmember Lazada, followed by Councilmember Ahmad.
Thank you. Thank you for being here this morning. You and others in the administration have consistently said that you hear the community's concerns. Today, you said that the concerns were substantive and legitimate. If you had to, if you had to choose the top two most serious concerns that you all have heard from the community, what would they be? And what, how are they being prioritized, and how are they being addressed, right? Because we, I've talked to multiple groups. We've seen multiple groups come in here, and consistently, the message is different. They are saying they're not hearing from the administration, they're not being heard. The information that we hear here is not actually getting on the ground and into the neighborhood. So what is the administration doing to ensure that those concerns are really being addressed by the people that would be impacted the most?
Okay, so just to answer right away, I think the two things that come up the most that we really need to think about are what I'll call quality of life and then traffic, okay? And I also want to say, we hear the concerns. I think the thing we're really hopeful for is that we're talking in terms of the right perspective, the right magnitude, and then have some respect for our ability to manage these situations and not just be overwhelmed by them, and, you know, focused on, you know, just the negative outcomes that we're all trying to work to avoid. So if I wanted to talk about quality of life, I think, you know, the perception, I think, is that it's going to be kind of like a mad house. It's going to be, you know, there's going to be a lot of security issues, that there's going to be, you know, litter all over the place, and that, you know, it's going to really diminish the feel of the existing neighborhoods once this is up and running. And so that's going to be an important focus of the Arena Services District to really channel those issues and make sure that, one, there's plans in place, but also that there's infrastructure in place, you know, in terms of actual investments in things like lighting and cameras, but also to make sure that institutionally it's seamless, that when there's an issue that the community raises, there's people that are on the board. There's people that are on these committees that are hearing that directly. Council will be involved in hearing that directly, and there's a direct line between those concerns being raised and the people who are accountable to go manage and take care of those. And there's resources to take care of those. We've talked a lot about traffic. I want to be clear. I think that the traffic situation requires focus. It requires work. But as I was saying last night, I think it's important that people not kind of get confused with the whole range of things that take place around the stadium complex with what's actually likely to happen here. So, you know, if you think about an Eagles game, it's about seventy thousand people who are in the stadium. There's tailgating, you know, in basically every lot that's available adjacent to Lincoln Financial Field. That's like four or five times the magnitude of what we're talking about in this location around Seventy-Sixth Place. There's no parking lots here, so there's not that sort of tailgating feel you're going to have. It's going to be contained in the building, and the uniformed police, other staff are going to make sure that that's all within the building, and then the flows out of the building and into the building are managed. The traffic situation does require some investment and attention, but in general, that perspective is important for people to understand. And that's what we're here to do, is to make sure when we convene this Authority, we have the board, they can communicate both ways, to make sure people have both a channel for their feedback, things we haven't heard even yet, but also that there's some body that's empowered to generate the ideas to make sure that the work has taken place to manage that.
But what are you all doing to specifically get the information to those that are on the, what are you all doing to specifically get the information to those that are on the ground, right? And I say this because I've experienced, right? In the Seventh, when we have it, when we have legislation or policy that some folks don't agree with, we get rooms full of folks that are making so much noise that those who are impacted the most don't have a voice. And so what are you all doing to really get the information to those that are right there, that are going to be impacted, that when all of these people go away, and this arena is there, or the changes made to that specific neighborhood are made, those are the folks that are going to be impacted? They stay behind. What are we doing very specifically to knock on their doors and make sure that they are heard, that we're hearing them?
Okay, well, I mean, I look forward to the Mayor's Town Hall going to the Seventh District here and directing from people. Those lines of communication are not going to close when the arena is being demolished or constructed or when it's in operation. I think there's certainly an opportunity for us to keep working with Council. So as I mentioned, Council will be involved in this Traffic Oversight Committee, and there's an opportunity for folks who have perspectives outside of the district to be represented in the board as well. And so I think the fact is that we do rely on the systems the city has in place to channel those complaints on an ongoing basis, you know, under routine circumstances, still being in effect, and they're not being like a wall between resident community feedback concerns and what this body is doing instead. It should be fluid. That stuff should come into this body. It will be independent, effectively, from the administration, although both the mayor will have appointing authority and City Council will have approval authority in that process. But it's not going to, it's not going to close off that conversation as things move forward. But I really want to reiterate the fact that this has to be a living process. I don't think it's going to work for us to assume we know everything now and then walk away and just assume it's going to keep working. It has to keep going.
Thank you.
Thank you, colleague. Chair recognizes Councilmember Ahmad, followed by Councilmember Young.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning. I think it's still morning. Thank you for your testimony. I had, in your testimony, you said the composition of the board for the, this new body will have no more than four members who live or work within the district boundaries and have no other conflicting affiliations. Could you elaborate on what that means?
Yeah, so no fewer than four, just to be clear. And then what would be conflicting is, for example, somebody lived in the district and worked for the mayor's office, or-
Worked for the, sorry, who?
Worked for the mayor's office, or lived in the district and worked for, you know, the Sixers, or one of the concessionaires in Seventy-Sixth Place, because we don't want people kind of advocating for other interests aside from those which are really the core interests of the existing communities today in the area.
And will it include people who have businesses there but don't actually live there?
Yeah, that's the objective. And certainly, when we're talking about the Traffic Oversight Committee, there's specifically focus on the businesses, because that's where a lot of the existing traffic parking issues are going to be focused.
And I noticed, are parking lot owners going to be included in this body?
I can't answer that. I think that has to be deliberated. You could make the case that parking lot owners bring a certain amount of expertise to what the issues are today. They certainly are going to be invested in the outcomes of how this all works, so there's certainly a case to include them. But I think I wouldn't preclude future conversation or deliberation about that.
And in terms of, you said you will potentially even think of new parking lot. This will be from the Transit, Traffic Oversight Committee, right, in considering new additional parking? I just wanted to know how the current parking, which is kind of inside the Chinatown, right, how is that going to accommodate on-game nights, the regular traffic who come to, you know, come to Chinatown, and this additional? Do we have capacity for that? And are you thinking of new parking lots that could be specifically targeted for arena visitors that would, you thread them through Chinatown on like a flash or a something, or they walk? they walk? That would not mess up the parking lots that are used to service the current visitors and people in Chinatown?
Yeah, so the, the existing capacity is, you know, sufficient, abundant for both the existing use and from our analysis, the events from Seventy-Sixth Place. We still feel like we've heard from folks in Chinatown that there's need for more, and so from the beginning, there was a commitment to do some analysis, so we'll be working with the Philadelphia Parking Authority to evaluate what that demand is. And sometimes it's not so much an issue of creating completely new parking capacity, but it has to do with how you manage the parking, parking capacity that you already have. So it's possible for within a lot or garage, there to be some parking that's set aside for specific users, and so their, you know, use of that might be through validation or they might have a daily or weekly or monthly pass. And so you have to kind of get into the weeds a little bit to understand how first, specific corridors or businesses or, or users, that can be divided up. It does require, when we're not talking about the PPA conversations with private stakeholders who own the garages, similar to your previous question, so it's not a, you know, straightforward task without actually doing the work and finding out how those things match up. Your idea about having some sort of a service is certainly one that we're willing to explore, that's come up before, and, you know, it's something that we would want to engage with the private sector to figure out how to run a service like that.
And this speaks to the improvement of pathways within Chinatown itself in order to facilitate people walking through and kind of enjoying Chinatown itself. One of the concerns that businesses have brought up to me have been the timing of the games are right when there's, you know, dinnertime in Chinatown itself, which they make their maximum dollars at that time, and these people not necessarily are going to be eating there, they're just going to be clogging up the space so their normal customers will not be able to park or come or eat. So that, I just want to know how we are thinking of that, to mitigate that.
So there's a couple of things there. So when, when we're looking at the way that the events, the pre-event period flows, you're not going to see a crush of people who are coming from all over to get there so they can be there right at 7:00 PM. It tends to trickle in. And so in my opinion, you're not going to see a big distinction between normal, you know, PM rush hour traffic, which is sort of heading out, and then, you know, a few hundred an hour that come in, and then as it gets a little bit later, you'll find that there's more people who are kind of either here already because they work here and they're going to a game or they were doing something else, and then they're going to walk...
Do you have any data around this reflection that, that we know the patterns?
So when we, when we look at both the current arena, how people get there, you see between about 5:45 and 7:00 PM, there's a curve that sort of, sort of goes up as people walk in the door. When you look at the other arena spaces, and we looked at about roughly 20 different, it's, it's a similar pattern. There's, there's much more compression in the exit, and when you talk to folks who work in the stadium district for any event, that's, that's where the real management needs to, needs to take place. That's when everybody is kind of all moving at the same time, not before the game. It's not to say that there won't be issues, but we think the natural sort of dispersion of parking around this area, the fact that as we're bringing people in from the places they already live to go to Wells Fargo, you're going to find a lot of people that are coming from the west, from the western suburbs, there are going to be a lot of people coming across the bridge, so basically coming from the east and the west. And the parking that's available east of Seventy-Sixth Place is where, through apps, through variable message signs, we're going to try and direct the people from the east to go, and the parking that's to the west is we're going to try and direct people from the west to go. And so Chinatown being set to the north, it's not as if nobody is going to park there, but it's more likely going to be people who want to go to Chinatown anyway and then kind of link that trip to Chinatown with their visit to the event that they're trying to go to.
And the reason I ask this, because I think in Councilman Squill's bill, there's a limitation of, of thinking how to limit how long people are parking in the spots, and is that part of this?
Street parking?
Yeah.
Point of information, yes, working with the PPA, that during event days, there will be no allowance of renewing street parking, per, meter parking. So if you, if it's only two-hour parking, if it's only one-hour parking, that's all you could do. You can't go park on the street, go into the event, you would have to come out of the event, put money in the meter if you want it, and then go back. You wouldn't be able to renew that.
So, yeah.
So that, that would be held for the businesses in the community, not people going to the event.
But it might also catch people who are there for a long dinner and then go to karaoke.
And, and we, we mentioned that to some of the businesses there in, in the Chinatown community, and they said, well, if they're, you know, having dinner, we would, you know, let them know that if they do have it, we'll, you know, that they have to go out to their car and pay a meter or, or, you know, go to one of the, the local lots, and we're working on, we don't have it worked out at this point, but working on a, a validation for parking for people visiting.
I mean, the devil is in the details.
Yeah, absolutely.
And parking is always the devil in the details.
Parking has been an issue in, since I've been born here.
I mean, if we can crack this nut, this can be useful everywhere.
Yeah, and again, I think it, it really is important for us to have a good plan, a well-researched plan, and then be nimble to address the things that come up. In my opinion, a three-hour restriction is going to work pretty well. You know, once you park, especially if you're parking in Chinatown, you know, that walk to the arena enduring, you know, enduring, hopefully they start winning, right? You know, sitting and enjoying an event and then walking back is going to be more than three hours. And so we're, we're not just going to leave it to chance, though, we're going to step up the presence of parking enforcement officers during the events, and so there's not going to be this slack that sometimes people think they can get away with or they can cheat for 30 minutes or something like that. We all understand that when, when there's events going on, we all have to bring our A-game in terms of enforcing what's going on on the street.
Right, right. Well, well, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that the option for this new parking lot dedicated for arena people, however that can transpire, and the passage through Chinatown for those folks on foot or some other method would hopefully enhance more participation in the economy in Chinatown. So please keep that in mind, and I don't know how we codify this, but these are the concerns the local people brought to me, that business owners brought to me around the parking issue.
Thank you.
But thank you, Council President.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. So in this amended agreement, there's a provision that says that when, regarding the, the folks who are going to be appointed to this board, that they need to have their, their primary residence or principal place of business within the boundaries. And just, you know, to give some clarity to my colleagues, our, our Supreme Court has defined what principal place of business is. It's essentially where your books are kept, your nerve center, where decisions are made. So I would hope that that clarity will provide, you know, some sense to say that there won't be any representation from the Seventy-Sixers on this particular board because their nerve center is in New Jersey, right? So I just wanted to put, put that out there on, on the record. And regarding the, the implementation of the, the traffic management plan, like if we're, we're using the CBA to fund this authority, correct? I just wanted to get, put that, alright.
Yes.
So, so the implementation of the plan is, is left up to the staff and the police. So does that mean essentially like the implementation, so who pays, who pays for the police and the staffing regarding the implementation of the plan? Would that come out of the CBA money or is that an additional money that the Seventy-Sixers or the developer will have to pay to the city?
Based on the draft event management plan, which the Sixers and their consultant put together, my understanding is that they are paying for that outside of the CBA.
Outside of the CBA? Okay, great, great for that clarity. Thank you for that. And if the goals of those approved plans are not met, like what are the, the consequences essentially? Like what, what is the recourse of the city? Do we just have to come up with a new plan or like who, like what, what do we, how are we able to, I guess, kind of mitigate that, that effect?
According to the, the amendments, we have the review by the Controller's Office, who would be able then to review that plan and then do the actual data crunching to make sure that that plan goals were being reached. And if not, our goal is to require the, it would be in the term sheets, but require the arena folks to be able to continue to provide transit resources for every ticket holder.
So the, thank you, thank you, Councilmember Squill, I appreciate that. So that, would that mean, would that include then, I guess, more money for traffic management to say we need additional police officers or we need, you know, additional staffing, additional public safety officers to actually manage that, that plan outs, again, outside of the CBA?
At this point, no. It would be that the plan would have to be adjusted to whatever we saw in, in, as the failures, and then we would have to adjust it. It could be as simple as, you know, there was one roadway that was not being cleared and, and traffic was not being able to flow up that street. It could be, you know, maybe we didn't have enough trains at one location and we need to put more trains there. So I don't, I'm not sure what the, how you put a cost associated with that, but right now, our thinking was that, you know, we would continue to provide and incentivize public transit so that the goal, I think the only measure that we have is, right now, is 40% public transit, which the study showed that we would need to have in order for the arena to be successful and not negatively impact the surrounding communities.
So I, I would just comment if I may, just two things I want to focus on, and one is, you know, these goals that are laid out now are important benchmarks for us. It's sort of the foundation for the work, but the proof is in the pudding when we see what's happening, when we see how well it's working, when we're getting complaints from people and managing those complaints. And so with that in mind, my experience is that, you know, better coordination, you know, more careful deployment of resources, communication solves the overwhelming majority of the issues that we see. And so from that respect, the way this Arena Services District is organized, so that, like I say, there's a tight feedback loop, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm feeling confident that many of the board members are going to be passing their cell phone numbers out to a lot of people who live and work in this area, we're going to react fairly quickly. And if we find for some reason, from the Controller's report, that that's not working, like I, like I'm saying, I expect some improvements in the way that people are coordinating is going to address a lot of that right off the bat before we're kind of adding more, more to it in terms of resources. Now, with respect to police, that's a police deployment decision which the Police Department will control, and they will make sure that they've got adequate resources so that this area functions the way that it should.
Yeah, a point of information before we call the next speaker, next member. So in South Philadelphia, when talking about the Philadelphia Police Department, does the sports stadium teams pay for the actual officers during game time? It's like a protected community. When you go to a game, certain blocks you can't go down?
Yeah.
Because there are police officers that are there managing traffic flowing in and out of the area during game times and pack-a-part.
So I can't speak to the specific mechanism myself, but yes, my understanding is that those resources come from outside of the city.
So for the record, the police coverage in a certain area, impact-a-part comes from outside funding, not the city budget. Would that be the same case with this particular project downtown?
That's, that's my expectation.
Okay. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jim Harity.
Thank you, Council President. I just have one quick question.
Mr. Harity, could you speak into the microphone so the San Diego could hear you, please?
Yes, Council President, I just have one quick question. The traffic committee, is PPA going to be serving on that committee or they going to be involved? Because for me, I would think that they should have some kind of say in there since they'll be doing most of the enforcement.
I don't see that in the latest round of amendments, but I feel like the administration would support adding PPA.
Yeah, yeah, I think that, you know, just for informational purposes, they should have somebody in the room if we're talking traffic, because again, they're the ones that will most likely be enforcing it.
Well, they, they certainly will be enforcing it.
Exactly. So just throwing it out there, maybe we can look at that, talk to Councilman Squill maybe. Thank you. Good enough.
Thank you. Councilmember Rulandau, and then Councilmember Brooks, and then next we're going to add the next panel.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Carroll, appreciate you being here. You were making a distinction between an Eagles game that has 70,000 attendees versus a six, the Sixers arena that will have 18,000. Have we ever had a situation where 18,000 people are being released into a center-city area at the same time?
So I can't speak from data, but I would say that, you know, there's a lot of events that take place at the convention center that are that order of magnitude, not that they all release at the same time, but similarly, they are going to have people who are basically pedestrians at the convention center dispersed to public transit, dispersed to parking garages, and then come and go. And, and, you know, just for more perspective on that, there's, you know, within center-city, there's, you know, 200,000 people who live here, about 280,000 people who, who work here, and every day, there's a lot of travel that's going on, which is really focused in these same set of blo, blocks. So, you know, we're talking about maybe 5%, 10% of that, which is in the evening, later in the evening, around 9:30, 10:00, going to be out on the street. It needs to be managed, you know, it's not nothing, but the network is, you know, abundantly large enough in order to handle those types of flows if it's managed correctly.
Okay, I would, I think it's an important distinguish, distinction to make, and including you said that most of the Sixers fans now are going between 5:45 to 7:00, down to the arena district, but that air, I mean, down to the stadium district, that place down there, it's like a food desert. So if you wanted to go and get something to eat before you're sitting down, I think there is a larger period of time than what will happen with the, you know, the, the incoming and the outgoing, the dissension of folks who are going to the district. I think it's extremely important that we keep this in mind.
Yeah.
Second question, I know that about three, I'm going to write them off fast, that the staff and teams, they're going to be parking underneath the building, is that right? Underneath?
Yeah.
What is, for the, on Arch Street near Eighth, there is an underground entrance, there's an entrance to the underground parking lot. Who is using that?
I've seen a proposal to that. I think the design is still being finalized. My understanding is, like you say, it is staff, there may be some VIP parking down there, that the teams specifically will have access to that, as I understand.
When visiting teams and concerts and their entourage come in those large buses, we call them tour buses, where will they park to let off all of their people in the bus and the equipment, and then where will they park, where, where will they remain after that?
I expect all of that to be within the footprint of the building, and so where that access point is, I would suspect it's along the, the stricken right-of-way of Filbert Street, but we'll need to see more detail as the proposal develops.
We get a lot of, we got to see more details.
Well, I think the main thing is it's not on street. They're not going to pull on to Market Street and let people out. That's not something that we would, we would permit. So it's not going to be on 11th Street, it's not going to be on 10th Street. It's a process of elimination, it's probably going to be on Filbert Street, but that point of access needs to be designed, and so where that point of access is, I think we'll have to see what they come back with. But my understanding is that that underground portion would be from that right-of-way.
Okay. Third question, just to clarify, you believe in the arena district that the police overtime for traffic will not be paid for out of the city's general fund, is that right?
I, I read what I thought was plain English in the draft of the traffic event management plan, that the Sixers will be responsible for staffing, police... Plan, that the Sixers will be responsible for staffing, police, and other personnel, both at the arena and at locations in the area that might be affected by traffic.
Even when it's not a Sixers game and when it's a concert or another event, is that right?
So I'm, I'm using the, the term Sixers broadly. The, the Arena Co., I think, is the, the moniker they're using now. That would be their responsibility.
Okay. We'd love to get clarity on that. Thank you, Council.
Yeah, we're going to get clarity on it. And I would think the same contribution that they were doing, that they were providing in South Philadelphia, any event that this move forward, if they're not there, that same percentage they're paying would, I think, would shift to a different area. But we have to get clarity for it. But I would think common sense would say, if I was paying it before, I was still paying in the future, but not just at the same location. The Chair recognizes Minority Leader Brooks.
Thank you, Council President. And I'm guessing you're the right person for this question this time. So the last time members of administration in the Sixers have testified, they both said that we'll be open to further negotiations around the CBA. Has there been any proposed changes different from Councilmember Squill's bill today to the CBA?
I can't speak to any changes. I'm not aware of changes.
So the vote today, does that eliminate conversations around any changes to the CBA?
I don't see why it would. It really is just council assuming the authority to incorporate an Arena Services District.
And so conversations around the CBA or improvements to that is still open?
I would say so, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, I want to thank you, Michael Carroll, for your testimony.
Thank you.
Mr. Christman, please call the next panel.
Bill McKinney, Wallette Carter, Michael Korn, Jeffrey Dosna, please come forward. Bill McKinney, Wallette Carter, Michael Korn, and Jeffrey Dosna, Dosna. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please begin your testimony.
So I'm, I'm here in place of Wallette Carter. My name is Kimberly Wilson. Good morning. I am a Girls High graduate, 250. I'm also the president of the Hill Freeman Road Academy Home and School Association, and the vice president of Membership and Engagement for the School District of Philadelphia's Home and School Council. As a North Philly resident, I want to thank my councilman, Jay Young, for not rushing to a decision on the proposed Sixers Arena and for asking questions that all Philadelphians have right now. I come to you with a deep concern for the future of our students, our schools, and our communities in Philadelphia. In my role, I visit schools all across Philadelphia, reminding families that they have a voice. PHSC reps have been in close to a dozen schools already this year, helping parents organize and talk through solutions to problems no one should have to deal with. I've worked with HSAs to address issues like broken boilers that leave kids in freezing classrooms without heat, cafeterias with paint chipping on walls, missing ceiling tiles in classrooms and common spaces, schools with broken accessibility ramps, and bathrooms and playgrounds that have not been upgraded since I graduated from high school almost 20 years ago. Every day, teachers and students in the city go to rundown school buildings and ask why this city isn't paying attention to how a new generation is being educated. Families talk to HSA leaders about their fears of how this will impact SEPTA and those who rely on public transportation. SEPTA is struggling to meet current demand and has testified that it will not be able to accommodate the additional traffic generated by the arena without reducing services on other critical routes. The buses, trains, and trolleys that many of our students rely on to get to school could be cut or rerouted to make space for arena goers, and this is simply unacceptable. Families are worried about school closings and shrinking budgets. There are questions about the tax breaks the Sixers Arena will get, while homeowners like me see property taxes rise. We cannot build schools, we cannot build great schools solely off of the backs of residents while the biggest developers go tax-free. The Sixers and every developer in the city should be helping to build and monetize every school to ensure Philadelphia has healthy, safe, accessible, and well-equipped spaces for our students, where our students can learn and thrive. In closing, what we need is for you to slow down this process, think carefully about the long-term effects of this proposal, because as a city, we should be prioritizing our children's future and not prioritizing a new entertainment venue. The promise of economic revitalization around the arena is far from guaranteed, and this arena project is not for our children, our students, or their families. They deserve equity and fairness, not empty promises from billionaire investors, and we as a city need to show that we are willing to make the right choice for them now and for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record. Please begin, sir.
My name is Michael Kane. I'm the pastor at Old First Reformed United Church of Christ at Fourth and Race in Old City, and I also serve as the Board Co-Chair with Imam Abdul Hassan of Power Interfaith. It's good to be here today. Power is Pennsylvania's largest faith-based organizing effort. In Philly, we represent 55 Protestant, Catholic, Jewish, and Muslim congregations in nine out of 10 councils. I am testifying today to oppose bill 240964, on which creates the Arena Services District. Power is one of 21 affiliates of Power Switch Action, a national network of local organizations working to realize multiracial democracy in our cities. Power Switch Action, formerly known as the Partnership for Working Families, is the nation's leading organization on community benefits agreements, CBAs. They've pioneered the concept in early, of CBAs in the early 2000s. They've represented community-based coalitions for over two decades in negotiating CBAs, and they've authorized seminal guidance and served as consulting experts for organizations and entities on government at every level. Power Switch Action is prepared for Power Interfaith the following testimony on the proposed 76 CBA. There's three points only. First, the monetary value of the community benefits agreement falls woefully short of that of other major sports venues, CBAs. Just at the level of the total dollar value, the CBA provides an alleged $50 million in contributions, only half of which are directed to the project's impacts. In contrast, the community benefit plan for the L.A. Clippers, New Arena, provided $100 million in community benefits, and the CBA for the Nashville MLS Soccer Stadium was valued at over $75 million. In addition, compared to other CBAs, the distributions are spread out over such a length of time and required to cover such a broad range of significant impacts that the actual effect of many of the expenditures will likely be negligible. For example, $3 million in total expenditures, we've been, oh, sure, $3 million in total expenditures over a 20-plus year term for traffic impacts, we've been talking about them. Similar, $3 million in total expenditure over a 20-plus year term for housing. A second problem with the 76 place proposal is it does nothing to ensure that all of the promised non-construction jobs will be good jobs. And finally, it's critical to point out that the mayor's proposal has co-opted the CBA concept by leaving community out of both negotiation and implementation. Other major CBAs, including for those basketball arenas in L.A. and Milwaukee, are either directly negotiated and enforced by community-based coalitions, are overseen by commissions or committees consisting entirely of community representatives, or both. Power Interfaith employs city council to negotiate a real community benefits agreement before passing this legislation. A CBA that's reflective of other major CBAs nationwide and meets the needs of communities here in Philadelphia will be so negatively affected by this arena. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please begin your testimony, ma'am. Sir, please begin your testimony.
Thank you for having us. Thank you, President Johnson. My name is Bill McKinney. I'm a Kensington resident and employee of New Kensington Community Development Corporation. I'm also a black developer who hires union labor and recognizes we can do better with this whole process that we've been engaged in here. I, I, I'm here because I have a number of concerns about process and outcomes of building an arena Chinatown-adjacent. I have concerns with the community engagement process. I have concerns with the community benefits agreement. I'm concerned about the president of continuing to make decisions for communities rather than with communities. I also selfishly have concerns that if we don't address these issues here, we will continue to allow them to happen throughout the city. I come here as someone who lives and works in Kensington, which is a community that has historically had things done to us rather than with us. I'm incredibly familiar with poor benefit, community benefit agreements, and, and, and these, these, these sort of moments have led to situations where we do not have positive outcomes and leads to us to continue to have to fight the negative outcomes that are the result. I'm here because I'm concerned that we have never truly had a strategy to support black and brown labor in the city, and instead we are now operating from a downstream position of pitting one community against another in order to cover our historical failure to systemically support labor. I'm here because we, as a city, continue to operate from a scarcity mindset rather than an abundance mindset. I'm concerned that our scarcity mindset tells us that we have to support one group through suffering of another. It is a nasty circle. It doesn't have to be this way. Neither has to suffer. I'm here because I'm questioning the engagement process and reminded that if we accept a flawed process here, that process will continue to be applied in other communities throughout the city. I'm concerned that this conversation will come to your districts and your constituents will be the new unheard, and no one will stand in solidarity as their interests, interests are trampled. I recognize that our scarcity mindset makes us fear rather than embrace truly participatory strategies. I speak from experience and from the very real bruises of decades of implementing truly participatory processes in communities, and know that these processes are incredibly labor-intensive, emotionally taxing, taxing and lengthy in execution. But also recognize that when done properly, these results are sustainable, community-based outcomes. Recognize the time. Us, what I want us to recognize is that a, a truly participatory process acknowledges the strengths within our communities, invest powers in residence in co-creating solutions. Community-led solutions are more sustainable because they are owned by those most affected by the outcomes. We understand that when looking at a ladder of increased participation, the bottom is token participation, which gives community a short-term sense of being heard, engaging in processes, and being at the table, while in reality, these are often tactics utilized to quiet displeasure and disagreement and mask already existing plans while re-traumatizing community. The result of that flawed process is a community benefits agreement negotiated without the community and lacking adequate value. When we don't implement participatory practices, the result is something being done to a community, not with the community. That is the theme, and that causes trauma to a community. I'm concerned that we are dismissive of the trauma that we have inflicted, whereas a top-down, single-strategy approach is re-traumatizing. A comprehensive participatory approach is a healing for the community. And I want us to succeed as a city, as a city. I want us to prosper, but that will not happen through fear-based, top-down strategies masquerading as progress. It will also not happen when we put profits over people and powers not shared, but is held by political and economic forces. We don't want to continue to traumatize communities as we have in the past, just as we have traumatized the black and brown worker through neglect. We don't want to feed the scarcity mindset, which says one or the other eats. Rather, we all have better meals together. We have the opportunity to pause and reset. We have the opportunity to address the trauma we created by doing something to a community, be it Chinatown or Kensington, and addressing, addressing through creating, and, and addressing safety, choice, collaboration, trustworthiness, and empowerment. With the opportunity to set a new precedent that we will not traumatize communities and then re-traumatize them by essentially minimizing what they are experiencing. With the opportunities to apologize for our historical lack of support of black labor and to build strategy that isn't on the backs of our vulnerable communities, and with the opportunity to co-create a community benefits agreement with those most impacted by an arena, wherever that may be. We have the opportunity to be known for committing to trauma-informed participatory processes that yield great success for all. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Bill. State your name for the record. Please begin.
Good morning, Council President, members of council. My name is Jeffrey Dosna. I'm an associate professor and head of the City Planning and Community Development Programs at Temple University. I'm an AICP planner and have been a member of the faculty at Temple for the past 20 years. I'm also the proud president of AFT Local 4531, the Temple Association of University Professionals, representing over 2,000 union members. I'm standing here today, providing testimony, who's someone who is pro-job, pro-union, and against this project. I want to focus my short time this morning on the notion that this project can happen without public support. It's simply not true. This talking point from developers of the project needs to be addressed directly. The very fact that city council is sitting here this morning, hearing testimony from myself and others, is because the project cannot happen without your support. When anyone, when anyone wants to build anything that runs counter to our long-developed plans, whether it's the Philadelphia 2035 Plan, the 18 different district plans, all the zoning ordinances, all of the overlays, all of the other districts that we've done that have been crafted over time with stakeholder input from hundreds and hundreds of people, anytime anyone wants to do something that deviates from that, they've got to come and ask for permission. And sometimes it's a small deviation, like my house is too close to a property line. And sometimes it's a mid-sized deviation, like I want to add an extra story to this housing project. And sometimes it's something like this, a massive redevelopment project in center-city. It's a cornerstone to how planning happens, that anytime anyone wants permission to violate the standing rules, they've got to come and ask forward for that permission from the governing body. We are, they are asking to bend the rules for relief from some of these ordinances because they're essentially asking to break the law just a little bit. It's how we do planning work. And for minor things, we tend to grant permission because it advances the public goods without having too much negative impact. But that means that whenever anyone is asking for zoning relief, what they're asking for is public support of a project. The developers can respond by saying that they're not seeking any public financial support, but this is not true. There are several areas, and I know my time is short, that I want to highlight where the city is being asked to provide financial support. The first is the land itself, and the land lease reflecting that the developers would be paying a fraction of what fair market rent would be if they had to purchase or lease it on their own without the city being involved. The second, already mentioned this morning, is the impact on SEPTA operations at Jefferson Station. Others can speak about that in more detail, but it will put a system that is already in serious financial bind under further stress. Third will be the real cost to the city, just testified to a moment ago, for increased police, fire, EMS that this project will bring. And if we are willing to believe the rosy projections about increased non-game events in the area 30 or more nights a year, we're going to have to deploy resources to this site. The most important fact is that this project features a pilot, a payment in lieu in taxes. Now pilots, yes, are used regularly to, to, as a tool to help redevelopment projects happen, but however they're structured, the fundamental premise behind a pilot is that the developer is getting a break on the taxes that they would have otherwise paid. We can make it more complicated than that, and this one certainly, as, as being drafted certainly is, but at the core, that's what a pilot is. It's a subsidy by the municipality to a private entity so that a project gets built. And again, this project can only happen if there's public support. So I'm going to ask everyone to review the testimony that's been already given. And just to, to wrap things up, there's one more point I want to make. In my class last week, my graduate economic development seminar, we dove deep into all of the published reports. We went into all of the details and all the assumptions. And one of my students asked a really important question. What happens when the team is lousy? What, the, the part of the myth of stadium and arena construction is that there's a spillover effect in the local neighborhood, that local bars and restaurants and other nearby businesses will prosper with increased customers on game day. And in almost all the cases, we've got good data for, those pre-build estimates tend to be overstated as compared to what actually happens. And in fact, even these studies here talk about half the businesses in Chinatown being negatively impacted. What my student wanted to know was what happens to those local businesses that might be on the upside when the team is doing badly and no one wants to go to the games, right? The billionaire owners will have already gotten their money from season tickets, from luxury boxes, from advertising, long-term licensing deals, even if the team is lousy. But what about those local businesses? What happens to them when no one is actually going to the game when the team is, say, 3 and 13? Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilman Jamie Garcia.
Are we done with the testimony?
Yes, we're done. Yeah. So we will be at recess and, well... Someone smiled. She was... Somebody smiled. She was, the young lady let someone speak on her behalf. She's at the table for questioning. All right. The, we will be at recess until one forty-five. Thank you.